City of Somerton work session. We're gonna forego all formalities and just do rocon. And then jump to the item. You roco?
Mayor. Mayor.
President.
President.
Mayor Naya is present. Vice Mayor Garcia.
President.
Councilmember.
Present.
Councilmember. I'm not sure if they can. Councilmember. That's from councilmember, councilmember. We're in a corner.
We have to call in or?
I do not know.
We're gonna discuss thirty-three related insurance.
Which microphone is active this time? They're all active, okay. Alright. Mayor Naya, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. We've been working on this health insurance plans for about a few months. And today we're gonna present the recommendation from the Health Insurance Committee. We're going to go over some scenarios that we were considering. And then at the end, we'll make a recommendation and for your consideration. So this is kind of for fiscal year 2020, 2021 coming up. Now, areas that we were considering and that will, that are coming up, they're based on a certain type of enrollment. So this particular grid is a, it's a historical perspective on how our employees have enrolled in the past between 2017 and the present. So this is the breakdown, 2017 of how many employees were participating on employee only on the HSA and then on PPO. And then at the bottom is the total number of employees at that time were ninety-five for that particular period of time. Then I took a snapshot on July 31st, 2018, December 31st, 2018, all the way to the present. So in order to make the projections of what the annual cost would be or the impact annually would be, we have to make certain assumptions. So Serena had suggested that I take the averages over the last maybe three years at certain points in time. But when I started looking at the data, there's a drastic difference between the way our enrollments were happening in 2017 versus 2019. If you notice, the HSA had a lot more participants at that time. And then it changed drastically when we converted to the most recent plan. So now we're have heavier participation under the PPO plan versus the, versus the HSA. So I think it was my, so my assumption was that the current enrollment is probably more indicative of what the next year will look like versus getting an average of the past three years. So if we look at the current enrollment, we have under the HSA, six participants for employee only, three under the spouse and one under the employee and children. For the PPO, we have sixty participants employee only, five under the spouse, eleven under the children coverage and twenty-two under the family coverage. This total enrollment of one oh eight at this, at this point in time is a little bit on the high side because we have some employees that actually retired and left employment for one reason or another but are still included here. I did decide to leave those numbers in there because we still have some open positions to fill. So this would be on the high side of enrollment and I use that as my projection for the year. Any questions on that? Okay. So projected annual costs of all plans under consideration, these are the plans that we were considering when we met with the Health Insurance Committee. So one of the plans that we looked at was Summit and CR Med. And this is a US and Mexi- Mexico plan combined. So this particular plan, you can't see it up there? Oh, where's this? How do I get it up there?
It's um, air team. I don't know when those.
It was showing up. Can we get it up to you? I got it. Okay. Just mental. Okay. Sorry about that. There it is. So the projected monthly costs under the previous assumptions and based on the rates that were provided to us, the total premium on a monthly basis for CR Med Mexico plan was one oh seven, two fifty-three. Annually, that would come out to about, close to one point three million, one thousand, one million, two eighty-seven. And based on the breakdown of seventy percent, seventy-five percent premium paid by the city, the column on the right would show what the city's share of the premium would be based on that breakdown. So all annual cost would be about one point one seven seven million. The next one down is Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona. These are plans that we looked at previously in the work session. This particular plan is a five thousand deductible for employees, ten thousand for family. The projected monthly cost based on, based on the previous assumptions is eighty-nine thousand, two sixty-two on a monthly basis and annually about one point zero seven, one million. And then to the right, the share to the city, based on the several, based on the seventy-five percent premium paid by the city for families for the dependent coverage, then it's, the annual cost would be about nine, nine hundred and seventy thousand. And if you recall, our current projection for the current cost of the insurance is about one point one five million. So this particular plan would actually lower our cost. I looked at the, we looked at the EMI Public Service Pool Plan. That particular plan had a projected monthly cost of one hundred and ten thousand, two seventy-eight thousand. Annually, about one point three million. And then to the right, the one point one nine five million would be the share of the city on an annual basis. And then EMI's current plan, this particular plan had, was actually higher than what it is right now. And as of twelve o'clock or so today, I got the revised numbers. So they actually came in, EMI came in and actually matched the same rates that we have under the current plan. So I went back and revised those figures. So the calculation for that annual premium on the EMI current plan is one point one ninety-three million. The city's share would be a one point zero eighty-two mil. So I took the, the. Yes, uh-huh.
I mean, you're giving like the breakdown, like, do you have the breakdown on the cost, what the cost would be for employee? I mean, you, you didn't show it here. What was it for, for employee?
For the employee only? I, I do have those calculations further down, yes. I, I'll get to that. I, I've got, got it broken down on a monthly basis and then what the, what the biweekly deduction would be. And side by side comparison. So for the transwestern Mexico plan, now this, this particular assumption is if all employees were to go to this plan and we only offered this plan, this is what the cost would be. I know it's not realistic, but just for comparison purposes. The projected monthly cost if all employees participated in this plan would be fifteen thousand, three ninety per month. On an annual basis, it would cost us about a hundred and eighty-four thousand. Under the Summit CR Med Plan, only Mexico only coverage, the projected monthly cost would be forty-five thousand, eight eighty. And the annual would be a five hundred and fifty thousand, five sixty. So this would be a way to compare one Mexican plan to the other Mexico plan that we consider. So the HIC recommendation for USA coverage was to go with the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona, the self-funded balanced funding plan. The PPO is five thousand deductible, twenty-five seventy-five, the twenty-five dollars is the, the copayment for a doctor's visit, seventy-five is the copayment for the specialist. The hundred percent means that once you get to the deductible, then the plan covers a hundred percent after that. Under the HSA, it's a five thousand deductible. For the transwestern plan, Mexico coverage, this is what the breakdown would be. The bottom estimated expected cost is about a hundred and forty-two dollars a month. And this particular number is actually for family coverage. So it would include employee and the family coverage for one forty-two, a hundred and forty-two dollars a month. The up above where you have a plan, a Mexico plan fix cost, life, two dollars and fifty cents a month, aggregate stop loss premium of ten twenty-five. There's some flexibility there. So if we wanted to just offer only the medical insurance and, and remove the life insurance coverage and remove the dental coverage, then the Mex- the medical insurance coverage would be about a hundred and fourteen dollars per month. So we can pick and choose a little bit with that particular plan. The aggregate stop loss premium for this particular plan is, instead of the other, the other Mexican insurance plans, the stop loss premium was based on an individual. I think at eighty thousand is when the, where the stop loss. We would be covering the first eighty thousand per individual and then after that, the stop loss would kick in. With this particular plan, it's on the, on the aggregate. So all of the employees would be counted towards the stop loss premium. And I believe they mentioned it was about a, I don't recall. I think it was about a half a million or something like that, to that effect. Okay. So other options to consider, the current proposal is based on the tenant coverage by the city at seventy-five percent. So I have Mr. Castillo suggested that we do a breakdown of what it would cost to do coverage at seventy percent, sixty, fifty and so forth. So I did a, a number of breakdowns. Okay. That's kinda hard to see. Can see it? Okay. So again, kind of in the middle of the, of the spreadsheet, those are the rates per month. And then the participation, their current enrollment. On the top, we have the seventy percent. So we, if the city of Somerton contributed only seventy-five percent. It's gone through. Okay. And so if the city of Somerton were to cover seventy percent of the, of the premium, then the annual cost would be about nine hundred and fifty thousand. And this is only looking at the Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is the recommended plan that we're considering. At sixty percent, the annual cost would be about nine hundred and nine thousand. At fifty percent, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand and so forth. Forty percent is about eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Thirty-five percent, eight oh eight thousand. And thirty percent, about seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And when as low as twenty-five percent, which would be about seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand annually.
Mr. Lee, I'm just to provide clarification. Employees only, still a hundred percent, this is just for with dependents.
That's, that's, that is correct. That's a good clarification. And so the employee, the employees portion would still be covered at a hundred percent. But the dependent coverage, family, spouse and children, that's, that's what would be impacted at those percentages. So this would be the, under this plan, the employee at, at contributing twenty-five percent for employee plus spouse under the HSA plan, their biweekly deduction would be fifty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents versus currently it's ninety-one dollars and sixteen cents. So the rates would actually be going down for the employees under this particular scenario. For employee plus children, the biweekly deduction would be forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents for the HSA versus seventy-four point seven five under the current rate. For the employee plus family under the HSA, the employee cost, I mean, employee cost would be a hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents biweekly. And the current rates are one thirteen oh five. So that one would be slightly going up. For the PPO, no cost for employee only coverage, employee plus spouse would be seventy, one point nine six biweekly versus ninety-four eighty-three currently. Employee children would be fifty-three point nine seven versus seventy-seven point seven six. And the employee and family coverage would be one twenty-two point sixty-nine biweekly versus a hundred and seventeen, sixty currently.
Do you have that calculation at, at the other percentages you showed it?
I, I, I didn't get to, to do that calculation that far for the others. Like if we did see like the seventy or the sixty percent.
Yeah, and to me that's important because that reflects the cost, the impact to each employee more than, and, and, and I think we should look at what's gonna impact each employee and also as far as out of pocket and, and of course, we're showing that overall, there's gonna be a savings here. I would, like, like I mentioned before, I would like to have a sustainable model that's equivalent to the other agencies, but at the same time, let's get the impact to, to which employee and what is gonna be out of pocket for them. We can figure it out here.
I have a question. You know what, I have a question. Wanted to be sure. The, the premium for, let's say, we, we, you know, we saw the recommendation of Blue Cross Blue Shield. What did you say would be the premium that the city's annual obligated amount? Could you spell that out, that, that's why that they show right now? Or that has had to go?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right there, you're, you're saying each year, two hundred, it's nine hundred and seventy thousand, two seventy, right?
Yes.
Could, could you just elaborate on how you got that number?
That number is based on the, the current enrollment. So if we look at the middle of the spreadsheet, the enrollments that, that I have there, that has six, six participants in the employee only HSA. So I use those rates and then I calculated what the seventy-five percent premium would be for the employee. And then, and then I got a monthly, a total of eighty thousand, eight fifty-five. And so that gave me my monthly premium and then multiply that up by the twelve months to get to nine seventy.
Okay. Okay, because if I. Okay, because I'm, so I guess what I did is I, I looked at the, our employee HSA, which is four seventy point six six. And I multiply that by, let's say, a hundred and eight, I believe in the last, we were using the assumption that we had a hundred and eight employees. When you multiply that, it gives me fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and three cents. Multiply that by, by twelve, that gives me a total of six hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars with thirty-sixths, not counting.
The dependent, the dependent coverage, yeah.
Right. So.
So this.
So am I, am I accurate on, on that, on those calculations?
For the employee only, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, for the employee only, yes. But the premium up there includes, includes everything, includes the dependent coverage as well. And, and one thing that I learned that I, in the previous spreadsheet that I had created, I, I had actually done the calculation incorrectly. And when I talked to the Yuma County to get, get a, get their, the rates and what percentages they cover, and by the way, Mayor and I, the, the Yuma County, they confirmed that they're going to the sixty forty. And right, and, and I think right now they're at, at sixty-one, thirty-nine. But by next year, they're moving to the sixty forty split for Yuma County. So they're not there yet, but my understanding from their, from their compensation person is that they're, they're eventually gonna get to the sixty forty. And, and the way that they calculate that is, for example, for family coverage, you take the, for example, like here, the HSA family coverage is one thousand, five hundred and six dollars and twelve cents. And then to get to the, to the, the sixty forty split, what they do then, they subtract out the employee portion because that's covered at a hundred percent. So you take fifteen oh six minus the employee portion at a hundred percent, which is four seventy point six six. And then that remainder is where they do the sixty forty calculation. So, so in every, in every situation, in every dependent coverage, you factor out the, the employee portion of it and then the remainder, then you multiply that by the whatever percentages you're gonna use. And, and so, and previously, the way I was calculating the percentage, I was just taking the, the, the total premium and multiplying that by seventy-five percent or whatever, which was incorrect.
If we, we use that formula, what, did you calculate how much would be to each employee?
I, yeah, this, this, what we're showing right now is, is based on that, on that calculation.
Which one?
On, on factoring out, for example, for family coverage, just fifteen oh six, subtract that out, four seventy point six six. And then, and then, and then, and then the twenty-five percent of that.
Using the twenty-five percent.
Yeah, on this, I used the twenty-five percent, correct. And, and that's.
And the.
Do a quick calculation here for sixty-four.
Would like to see.
For the sixty forty?
We can't do nothing there to do sixty forty. How would you get that formula?
Well, I guess it's, let's see. Kinda try and see if we can get it there.
Serena.
Or Serena, where you need her.
You kind of, you kind of spent one point one billion, kind of like I'm sure it's fair, fair to say, by half a million.
Kind of responding.
Yeah, so I think. You don't need to go to the county's formula, but we need to at least.
But that, but that's, that, that formula is actually, when I went back and, and double checked how, what our numbers were previously, that's the same formula that we were using here as well. So Lucia was using that same, the same methodology. So my assumption then, if the, if the, and, and those, those calculations were being done in Yuma County by a consultant and, and that's what they shared with me. So, so that's.
I was saying, actually, the formula, just the, the split.
Split, uh-huh. So this is not responding. Well, it's, 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 it's getting frozen here. A copy, please.
Just this?
Yeah, just that.
Right here?
Uh-huh. Did a right click, I see, did a, a hand command, control B. Oh, didn't have enabled everything. Okay.
Are you using that formula? Because if you're using a formula, you're transcript, it's not gonna come out to be the same.
Right, it's a.
You would have, I think, ninety-one dollars.
So I got that.
Are you trying to test the whole formula?
I'm gonna say it's just a. Two seventeen or one minute?
I guess it just goes here. So if we did forty percent, if the employees contributed forty percent, then the rates for the HSA would be ninety-five seventeen for the spouse, seventy-eight twenty for the children coverage, one ninety-one sixteen for family coverage on a biweekly basis. The, the PPO would be, spouse would be one fifteen, eighty-six thirty-five for the children. The PPO would be, spouse would be, uh, one fifteen, eighty-six thirty-five for the children and one ninety-six point thirty for the family.
You come up with, uh...
Well, this, this would be if the employee contributes forty percent, uh, instead of, uh, twenty-five.
Okay, leave the formula there. Seven thirty minus two thirty-nine, you're subtracting the employer's cost at seventy-five percent? And forty percent, it doesn't... I'm looking at the formula, C thirty?
Yeah, C thirty-six would be, uh... Which is...
PPO bi-weekly.
Yeah, the, the PPO bi-weekly. So we subtract that out because that part of it is covered at a hundred percent. And then the remainder is where we take the percentage.
Mayor, uh... Yes, I, um, what, what I, what, while we're trying to figure that out, um, with, with, what I would kind of, you know, and this just popped up, right? But if, if we work on it backwards, let's say, for example, I'm looking at, at four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-six cents, that's the employee coverage, that's, that's what we're gonna pay regardless, right? So, um, if, if, if our budget for this year, I mean, we spent about approximately one point one million, you know, to me, it's just, there's, there's about half a million dollars in, in potential savings, depending on which, where we wanna go.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, doing the math, you know, if, 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 if we, we have a consideration, you know, that, that could be considered is, see how much of that half a million do we wanna invest in, in dependent coverage? Um, and, and we can do it backwards. Let's, let's say, if it's half a million, if it's, if it's half a million, do we wanna put two hundred thousand? Do we wanna put three hundred thousand? And then define that and figure out that, that we, 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 we know we have, um, extra, we, we have additional funds coming in that could potentially give visibility to our city manager. You know, just looking at it backwards, you know, uh, instead of kind of trying to figure out our percentage, if we, if we, I mean, that, I think that's one, we have to look at it, uh, with the formulas and everything right now that are not correctly, uh, you know, for the time history, you know, it just, how, how much are, are, are we as a city willing to, to, uh, to, to, uh, to, to, to cover? You know, so I, I wouldn't look, I, I mean, I could look at this backwards and, uh, and not just as a suggestion, you know, while we figure out those numbers, you know, which we did request at the thirty-five and fifty.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may add, just, I'm not a member of the health insurance movement, I'm just an advisor. And so, one thing at the last meeting that came up is, if there is savings generated by a change in the health insurance coverage, what should be done with that, those, those monies? And, and one idea was to augment employee pay in, in some cases. You know, what's more valuable to an employee, benefits or, you know, what's in their paycheck? And there was really no consensus, I don't believe, from the committee on that, but those were... And that's what, wasn't what they were appointed to do, is to figure out what to do with the savings, but that, that conversation did come up.
Okay, so based on the, based on the current recommendation, uh, last year, we, we spent about one point one five million and thi- this year, the city's share would be about nine hundred and seventy thousand. So, uh, on this plan, we're saving about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand from last year's, from last year's, um, cost.
If we do the forty percent?
If we just, uh, if we just do the recommendation that we're proposing right now, we're already saving money. Because last, last year's, last year's cost annually was one point one five million. And this year, our projected cost is about nine hundred and seventy thousand, the, for the portion that the city will pay. So that right there is less than, than what we paid last year at one point one five million. It calculates out about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand in savings versus last year's cost. And that's at the, at the seventy-five percent and twenty-five percent for employees.
I think we understand that, and I understood that at that meeting.
Uh-huh.
What I wanted in this meeting is, we were trying to change the percentage of the city is for family coverage 'cause that's what got us in trouble last year. And we need to have a sustainable model for the future and decide on percentages. Seventy-five, twenty-five, we saw that it's very, uh, compared to the other agencies, it's very, uh, you know, it's, uh, very, how, how do you say it? Very, uh...
Generous?
Generous, which is fine, but like we mentioned, we also have a salary deficit there. And when we're all compared, we're always compared because of low salaries, not because of low insurance rates, unfortunately. So, like, it, it, so, you know, I would like to see those numbers and, and play around with the percentages and see what the effect... 'Cause I, I don't, I don't wanna change percentages and affect the employees either. You know, we can have something, a happy medium between what, what we have now, have the employee contribute more to family coverage so the, so our taxpayers are not putting all the bills there and, uh, but... That, to me, that information was important and I, and I felt that we were clear in our direction in the last meeting. And we understood that Blue Cross Blue Shield basically was, 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 was gonna be recommended 'cause there was a savings. But still, that piece of information of what's gonna affect the employee, 'cause this is, this, this is more of an effect. We knew that we were gonna save from last year, 'cause that, last year was crazy, 'cause we just...
Cut, cut off guards, so that's why I said...
I forget what we paid last year, let's, it's a, it's an outlier. But we need to start looking into having a, a sustainable model for, for the future.
And...
As a savings that we can provide, as we spoke in the retreat, we would wanna see frontline employees be compensated because when you compare skills and, and, uh, certifications are required, that's, that's what we're lacking right now then. You know, we are, we are, we are losing those, those employees, being a, a police officer, firefighter, uh, public works employees, uh...
And operators, that, that's what we need to be starting looking for.
Um, I did speak to, um, to the, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield as far as, um, implementing this plan. And they, um, we have some leeway right now because, uh, 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 we could still, uh, make a decision at the end of the month and still be able to implement it, uh, in a timely fashion if it, if it required to go that far. I don't think it needs to go that far, uh, but we do have some room to work with. Um, now, as far as, um, I understand what the objective is and, 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 and there are many different ways to, um, get us to where we wanna be, which is a more sustainable plan and also, um, where we reduce the cost to the city and still provide a, a good plan for employees. Um, working with the percentages is one way to do it, but it's not the only way. We actually have a number of, um, variables within each plan that we can move around to, to still achieve that objective of lowering the cost. So for example, um, there are some other plans that have, um... That under the, uh, under the HSA and under the, uh, PPO, there are additional plans that the HSA has, um, plans that have a higher co-payment that reduce the premiums significantly. Uh, so we can have, um, an HSA that's even a higher deductible plan versus the one that we're looking at at the moment. Um, and then a PPO plan that also has a higher deductible plan as another alternative. So i- if we offer, let's say, two PPO plans, one that's more generous to the employee and maybe more costly for them, um, we, that could be one option. Or we can offer another plan that, that, um, that has a higher deductibles and higher co-payments but reduces, uh, the overall premiums, uh, on a monthly basis. And that in turn would create a cost savings for the, um, for the city, uh, and also reduce the premiums for the employee as well. But on, on, on the flip side of that is that, uh, um, for those employees that don't go to the doctor very frequently and so forth, on a bi-weekly basis, their premiums would be lower. Uh, but for those employees that use, go to, have, um, go to the doctor quite frequently, um, so then they would be actually spending more because they would have to meet those higher doctors. And, and I apologize, I didn't have time to lay out all those other scenarios that were, uh, some of this information I got, um, as soon, as earlier as today. And so I was trying to put as much as I could on, on the scenarios and the spreadsheets and I didn't get far enough to be able to do all these other considerations.
I think it's, uh, at this time, I mean, you know, I, I would be comfortable going with this plan. But as far as the split, I think there's further discussion that we, we need to have, just seeing the numbers.
Okay.
I know we're gonna have budget meeting, you know, we could have a...
That's for acceptance, we need that. Right. All right, but it, when we had our, our, our House Committee meeting, didn't we have to make a de- decision today? But I was under the understanding that...
It's, it's preferred, it's preferred so that we have enough, uh, and, 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 um, and it depends on the plan. On, on other plans, um, I was getting, uh, I was getting the sense that we needed to have more time to draw the contracts and then do the open enrollment and so forth. Um, under this particular plan, um, they have a little bit, we have a little bit more flexibility. So it's not quite a surgeon, but, but I think the sooner that we make a decision, probably the better.
Okay. Now, I, I did leave early ahead of a, a ten... And what, what do you mean, I would be, I would be, I would be, I would be, I would be... The recommendation that the committee was just Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, and, and, you know, the Mexico plan?
We, we, we recommended, uh, the Mex- the Transwestern, um, because they can work independently, um, with as little as ten participants, um, for the Transwestern plan. So their, so their particular, um, um, we can, and, and so if we, if we go with Blue Cross Blue Shield as our primary plan with an HSA and a PPO plan, um, we can still offer the, the Transwestern, uh, Mexican coverage, um, family coverage to our employees. And we can decide how, you know, how we, what percentage we, we wanna do there or, and so forth. Um, but that can be offered as an additional, uh, plan in addition to this. Um, and it wouldn't affect our Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, enrollment. And potentially, there might be some employees that, um, that, uh, might, uh, look at these premiums that they're a little bit, uh, in a, a way for them to say, have savings is to have the employee covered under, under this plan and have the family coverage under the, uh, under the, uh, Mexican family coverage plan. Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, just, I thought the committee did discuss possible ways to incentivize families to take that Mexican plan because the savings would be so good for the city that it might, there might be some incentive that the city could offer a family.
Because if they, if they take the Mexican, uh, coverage for, uh, the cost, the cost, total cost is only a hundred and forty-two dollars a month, uh, for family coverage.
The city could pay a hundred percent of that, we'd be totally choosing...
And we would still save about a thousand dollars.
Or be the percentage, so it's gonna be a model going forward.
You know what, I, I, I think, that's something I, you know, we, the city can, uh, the city can pay, uh, employees' medical coverage and, you know, offer them Mexican for their family, that way we don't leave them without anything. And then it'll be up to the employee to, to elect if they wanna, um, cover, uh, their family here in the States with that Blue Cross Blue Shield. I mean, I, you know, I, 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 you know, I, I think if we have the ability, if we were able to sustain that, you know, with the, you know, I... By all means, I mean, as you go, go for it. But honestly, I don't think our, our, our city can be that generous and, and sustain it. But I, I mean, I think that's, I think that's, that's, that's an option, you know?
And because that means that, whether the city paying for family coverage, a hundred and... Are we paying for family coverage right now?
Right now?
Seventy-five percent?
Uh, seventy-five percent, uh-huh, yeah.
Mayor, I have a question, which, what, something on, but you're saying, um, far as, for, for, um, offer the employees a Blue Cross Blue Shield that they will cover and let them know that they want family coverage to go to Mexico. Um, do they still have the option of some type of coverage with Blue Cross Shield? They don't wanna have their families go to Mexico?
There's, there's, uh, I, I actually, um...
I, I would say that would depend on the employee, you know, if he chooses to have the family, why not? You know, if you...
But I, what I'm asking is, is a certain type of percentage and amount, you know, if the employee... My concern is, is public safety. Most of our public safety, you know, like the officers in state, they don't travel a lot to Mexico, that's what I think, but, I mean, you know...
I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't travel to Mexico.
Yeah, for conditions like, like family members have, uh...
So that's what I'm asking.
So I would like to keep...
And that's a discussion that I, I would like to keep the sixty forty if, for Blue Cross Blue Shield. But if the employee chooses something, uh, if we, if we see that it's a savings, the Mexico coverage for family, we could pay even a hundred percent or whatever makes sense. But that's why we need those numbers to, to look at. But yeah, uh, and my concern is, yeah, don't, you make it, you make it very, uh, uh, you know, ve- ve- very, uh, attractive to, for the Mexico insurance and a lo- a lot of saving. But if the employee so chooses, that's their choice though. But I feel the city needs to provide also the, matching the other agency, that's why I wanna see those numbers. We're always comparing our salaries, but we gotta compare also a lot of property.
So then, Mayor, I think, I, I think with, with, with that comment, you know, I, I, I feel that, okay, if it, if it would cost the city a hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents to cover our, how much are we as a city going, uh, will we willing to, 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 uh, to, to provide our employees for dependent coverage? You know, I, I think it would be based on percentage, if, if, you know, I don't know how that's gonna look, but if we set an amount, it'd be a hundred thousand, it could be two hundred thousand, we'll go exactly what that amount is.
What I, what I want is for the future, to have a formula, so every year, we're not coming back and looking at, at that, yeah, we might have a committee, the, maybe tweak it here and there, and when we saw the seventy-five percent at...
That bad year was just like...
We saw what the impact to the city was, but it, it was, insurance is very volatile. If we establish an amount, to me, it, to me, it's more sustainable, having a certain percentage that, that, that makes sense and we can tweak it, we, because from year to year, we're gonna be dealing with a set amount, how much we're willing to. And, and we've seen, uh, insurance coverage, it's just, uh, been going up and down, it went very...
And last year and...
You know, it's...
Ma- Mayor, just, just quickly, um, a- a- after, after, um, I jumped through these scenarios and, and put this, this together, um, I did, I did get additional information, um, on, on some oth- other types of HSA, HSA plans that have, for example, one that has a five thousand deductible, um, but rather than, uh, at a hundred percent, uh, after the deductible is met, it's only at seventy percent. Um, and that, that particular, uh, monthly premium for employee only is, uh, at four hundred and four dollars versus, uh, what's seventy right now. So that's about, uh, around sixty-five dollars or sixty dollars less, um, per month under this particular plan. And, and my thinking there was that if we were to, um, I, I need to lay it out to see what it looks, what the calculation looks like. But potentially, we might be able to offer a, a really, um, high deductible HSA plan for employees combined with, uh, Mexican insurance in a company, in a combination so that, so that you still have the option of being able to go to Me- Mexico and have certain procedures done or doctor and so forth. Um, but at the same time, still have American coverage at a high deductible, but still have the coverage. Uh, and that combination, um, might, um, help us to reduce the cost and possibly be more sustainable for the future. Uh, and that combination um might um help us to reduce the cost and possibly be more sustainable for the future. Because it, 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 it still gives us the option to provide American coverage for, for the employees at, at a, at a lower cost to the city, and for them, a way to save money uh overall for the year is to have certain things done in Mexico. Maybe you go to a, a primary doctor, or uh flu, or some things could be done in Mexico when they can, and that would help reduce the cost, um...
So it would be less cost overall for the plan and for the employee.
And also for, for, for family from Mexico, we'd take, take a hundred percent or ninety percent with city, you know, they only pay...
A hundred percent a month.
Correct.
Yeah, sure.
Correct, and, and then, and then in addition to that, we would still offer a PPO plan, which is more generous uh i- as far as uh, um, uh, the um monthly, uh, the outlet for the employees, because uh, um, they can go to doctor for twenty-five dollars, and a specialist for seventy-five, and have a deductible of five thousand, and, and it's got a lot of nice features to that. Um, but then with the high deductible HSA, um, um, then we can have the, add the uh, the Mexican uh insurance coverage for them. A- and I think overall, the, those two premiums combined, I think will still get us to a lower, lower cost. And that could be one option, in addition to somebody that just wanted to have just Mexican-only coverage for family. There might be one or two families that might take that.
You know, I, I was just gonna say, take, I mean, take care of on the forehating this, I mean, I know, you know, uh, this seventy-five percent dependent coverage has been in place for a while, so it didn't, it hasn't been, you inherited this, so, you know, so, so thank you for taking lead on that, you know, uh, so I mean, it's, it's, we're, we're trying to do uh, you know, the best we can, but I know you were, you inherited this, so it's, in no, in no way are our questions, you know?
No, I understand, uh, a- and I, and I think we're, we're all on the same page, I, I think I, I'm also, I'm also concerned about the overall cost to the city, I, I'm also conscientious of trying to lower the cost overall, um, but at the same time balancing um as much as we can offer our employees, um, not take away as much as, you know, take away as little as we can from the employees and try to provide as much coverage as we can. But there's different ways to get there, uh, and I, I think if we just, if we just keep an open mind and, and understand what the objective is, then w- we might be able to work things out, um, to achieve that single of lowering the cost and make it sustainable. Right now, um, there could be, um, just like the Yuma County, uh, Yuma County, what they did, what they were telling me is that uh, um, based on the previous percentages that they were covering, they were covering a, at a higher percent, but the county was covering a higher percent for the premiums, my understanding, and there, uh, y- one year they stepped it down one point to one point, and then they stepped it down further, and then right now they're at uh like sixty-one thirty-nine, and the goal next year is to go to sixty-fourty. So we could move towards that.
I, I like that. I think w- w- one of the, what I would like to see is, if we match at least the uh, what, what percentage difference is, if we match the rate from last year, so we see that they're going down this year, if we match those rates that the employee out of pocket, see what that looks like, and then we can have a special feature maybe.
Okay.
So the impact is not as much on the employee.
And I, and I like your idea, and, and if there's a savings, even if the city pays a hundred percent for coverage in Mexico with a high deductible, I, I'll be all over it, save the city money, and it'll work for the employee. There's a lot of families that don't visit the doctor, and they go, you know, the, the issue and the concern is both with pre-existing conditions that need to have the more advanced medical care that suffer here in the United States, but right, there's families that really don't.
Yeah, and, and some employees just have, um, they don't have any experience going to Mexico and getting medical coverage in Mexico, so for them, it's something foreign, there's no, not something that they're used to. They probably have a medical providers that they're comfortable going here, so, um, but yeah, it's not gonna work for everybody, but I think uh, but I think if we um offer that combination, um, then they get, it gives them more flexibility.
And, and I also think that'll, that'll provide more, it'll be a more equitable plan, because I, I do feel like if we have a, you know, a city employee that's, you know, that's single, you know, that dependent coverage plays no part, and there's no benefit for him, you know, um, so I mean, what, what does he really get out of it? You know, there's really nothing, you know, he, he doesn't have a family, he doesn't, you know, so that, that benefits package is not, and, and he'd rather be earlier, earlierly, um, than that package, so, you know, I, 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 I think that's...
Yeah, so, so some employees, i- it would be attractive to take a, a high deductible plan if it can lower the cost for them, because uh ultimately, i- if, if the, if they can go to a lower uh bi-weekly premium, that's money in their pocket. It's almost like getting, getting a raise, so if we can put more money in their pockets, I, I think that's, that's good for the employees as well. Um, but if they have that option, um, then, then that could give them the flexibility of lowering the premium on a bi-weekly basis and getting more money. For that, for the ones that, that are fairly healthy and, and it makes sense for them.
Thank you, Armando.
Okay, so I think, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, you'll be back on the ready meeting.
Okay.
Use the journey, just take a five-minute break and then we'll start.